Wonderful. Good morning, good morning. And welcome to the City of Bessemer, 1700 Third Avenue, North Bessemer, Alabama. City Council Meeting. Today, April the 6th, 2021. Meeting has been called to order. We'll ask that each counselor would pray for its district as well as the City of Bessemer. Not only the City of Bessemer, we'll pray for our sister cities who are suffering along with the City of Bessemer. We ask that you would pray for them. A word of silent prayer, please, councilors. Amen, amen. Thank you all for your prayers. Row, item number three, Ms. Taylor.
Um, Counselor Alexander.
Present.
Counselor Collier. Counselor Collier.
I saw him.
Counselor Crusoe.
Present.
Counselor Marshall.
Present.
Counselor Thickepin. Counselor Thickepin. Counselor Matthews.
Present.
Counselor Donald.
Present.
You have five present, two absent, you have a quarrel.
Thank you, um, Ms. Taylor. Item number four, please.
Approval of minutes from February the 23rd, 2021, and March 16th, 21, and March the 24th, 2021.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Taylor, councilors, you've heard. You've heard Ms. Taylor in the minutes. Are there any concerns and/or corrections? If not, I need a motion second and a vote, please.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
I move the motion to adopt the minute.
Need a second, please.
Second.
Has been properly moved and second that we adopt the minutes for February 23rd, 21, and March the 16th, 24th, 2021. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Um, did I just hear Counselor, uh, Collier's second name?
Yes, sir, I see it had been properly moved and second.
Has Ms. Taylor, uh, law, uh, have we accepted him in the meeting? I did, I may have missed.
I do apologize, Ms. Taylor. Let us accept Counselor Collier into the meeting, please.
Okay, Counselor Collier arrived at the council meeting at 10:01 a.m.
Thank you.
Will you mind carrying that again, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir, I will, I need a motion, a second, and a vote, please. We had not accepted Counselor Collier into the meeting, I apologize, councilors. I need a motion, please. I need a motion, please. Need a motion to accept the minutes, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I move the motion to accept the minutes.
Need a second? Need a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, and it has been properly motioned and second that we'll accept the minutes from February 23rd, 2021, March the 16th, and 24th, 2021. Row call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor Collier.
Uh.
Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Matthews.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you, uh, councilors.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you announce my arrival? I've been sitting here listening, but I must have come in right behind.
Okay, Ms. Taylor, will you, will you, um...
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Thickepin arrived at the council meeting at 10:03 a.m.
Thank you, thank you. Item number five, please.
Committee reports.
First, are there any committee reports? If there are not, item number six, please.
Presentations, awards, announcements, and recognitions.
Thank you. Mayor Gully, are you on the line?
Yes, good morning, Madam President, good morning to the council and all who are listening and, uh, on the line. Uh, I do, uh, have a proclamation that I'd like to present on behalf of Fair Housing Month. Uh, I'm gonna ask, um, Madam Clerk to read that proclamation into the minutes, please.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, this is a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor, Bessemer, Alabama. Whereas the month of April is recognized throughout the United States of America as Fair Housing Month. And whereas Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended, set forth a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, or disability. And whereas the city of Bessemer will continue to affirmatively further fair housing in residence. And now therefore being resolved, I, Kennedy Gully, Mayor of Bessemer, Alabama, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Fair Housing Month of the City of Bessemer.
Thank you, um...
Madam President, we have a lot of state that we won't be able to hear when we be able to take news and someone would mute their, um, their volume.
Yes, ma'am, please mute your devices until you are going to speak. Please mute your devices until you, um, are going to speak. Mayor Gully, was that, um...
No, Madam President, I also, uh, would like, um, all of our condolences, uh, to the family of Mr. Ron Whiteley. As many of you know, he was killed on last Thursday. Uh, he's been a longtime business owner in the, uh, City of Bessemer for over 50 years. Uh, owning Ron's truck service as well as, uh, Ron, uh, motorcycles and small engine repair. So, uh, I, I would like to ask everybody, uh, to pray for and offer our condolences, uh, to the Whiteley family at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Gully. And on that note, we did, um, receive a letter from Mrs. Geneva Whiteley that we will read. Uh, let us also keep the Alexander family representative, Alexander, and Counselor Kimberly Alexander lost their aunt as well as sister that will be, um, funeralized on Friday at 11 o'clock at the Howland Memorial Gardens.
Uh, and Madam President, uh, I, I would like also to take this opportunity to offer my condolences and so to all, uh, other family members who, who, who've had some loss over the last, um, uh, few weeks and months, unfortunately. Uh, as many of you know, we, we had a, uh, very, uh, deadly Easter weekend.
Hmm, yes.
And, um, we just, we just want to offer our prayers and our condolences, uh, to all of those families and whose experience bereavement at this time. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor Gully, thank you so much. And that, uh, and I tell you, that means a lot coming from you going to the citizens of this city. Uh, I can tell you because I've spoken with them, thank you so much for offering your condolences and our sim- and/or sympathy to these families. Councilors, I have a letter here in my hand that says, April 5th, 2021, Bessemer City Council, 1700 Third Avenue, North, Bessemer, Alabama. Dear City Council Members, I am writing to request the use of the Bessemer Civic Center to celebrate and honor the life of my beloved husband, Ronald Paul Whiteley. The celebration of life service will be held Saturday, April the 10th, 2021, at 12 noon with viewing at 11 a.m. And it states the same thing as Mayor Gully said, he has been a loyal, uh, businessman here in the city for over 50, uh, 50-plus years. I think after I spoke with him, I was teasing, I said, well, I can't ever remember him doing anything but working here in the City of Bessemer. But unfortunately, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we are able to accommodate our lawyer customers, family and friends. This comes from the Chambers Funeral Home. If we would please, if you would please allow us to use the Bessemer Civic Center, we will respect social distancing and be forever grateful. And your kindness is appreciated. Sincerely, Geneva V. Whiteley and family. Councilors, we do have a resolution in place. Uh, because of the timely tragic death of Mr. Whiteley, I would ask that you would, um, give me a resolution, I'm sorry, a motion, a second, and that you would, uh, row call, please.
Madam Chair, will you make in a, will you make an item number, please?
Yes, sir, I, I, well, actually, yes, sir, I will make it an item number. We will make that, uh, item number 7A, if that's okay with this body. We'll make that item number 7A. I need a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make the motion that we, um, allow the Whiteley fam- family to utilize the Bessemer Civic Center for the, um, home-going services of, uh, Mr. Whiteley.
So, I said, thank you. It has been properly moved and second that the Whiteley family will be allowed to use the Bessemer Civic Center due to COVID-19. And they will, they stated that they will, uh, follow all rules and guidelines of the City of Bessemer. I need a row call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor Collier.
Uh.
Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Thickepin.
Aye.
Counselor Matthews.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you, um, councilors. Thank you, Mayor. And we just want to tell the Whiteley family, we are praying with them. We're praying for you through this tragedy.
Madam Chair, still someone, someone is not muted and this music keep ringing, uh, and it distorts for the, uh, record keeper to make, uh, good minutes, okay? I was just reminding whoever, whoever have the phone on.
Whoever has it on, please, please mute your device. I have muted mine, please mute your device. Uh, Ms. Taylor, yes, sir.
I'm looking at the gallery and there's several people that, several phones, I see two that's up now that's not muted, so, okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Taylor.
Yes, ma'am.
That was 7A. 7B will be Mr. Walter Lewis. Mr. Lewis, please step up to the podium. Go ahead and put it down, or I'll put mine down, either or. Because we, we need to get these minutes.
Uh, President Donald.
Good morning, Mr. Lewis, how are you?
I was going fine. Um, I want to thank you and the council, the mayor of the City of Bessemer for allowing me this chance to come before you this morning.
Yes, sir.
What I wanted to present to the council and the mayor is a G-17 letter. Uh, and what this letter is about is allowing me to, the opportunity to move forward with the on-financing refinancings for the city as, as well as the financings for the gasoline tax and roads. Um, this, this form allows me to give the city advice, uh, there, and it defines my role. Just having a signature on this document, it allows me to go forward to move, you know, the, the process forward, you know, there. So, um, I wanted to come before you this morning to, to see if there are any questions as it relates to this. Um, um, uh, for me to be able to search the city, uh, in a manner that's, um, um, efficient for this transaction. Um, uh, a signature would be needed for the G-17 letter. This is a non-binding type of a contract, but what it does for the city is it, it defines my role as a, as an underwriter as opposed to a municipal advisor. And, um, um, allows me to give the city advice throughout the process of this, this particular transaction.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair. Hello?
Yes.
Madam Chair, you're muted. You're muted, you're muted.
Okay, can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
I can hear you, uh, Mr. Marshall, one moment, please. Ask Mr. Lewis a question. Um, with this disclosure, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Taylor, are you still getting feedback?
I am, yes, ma'am.
Come, turn this one down. Just come turn this one down for me. And stand, stand back for a minute, Mr. Mr. Lewis, okay? Um. Is there any entity in the city that has this disclosure?
Yes, ma'am.
So we would not be the only entity in the city that have this disclosure?
Let me, let me...
Other entity in the city that have this disclosure?
Well, we did the library warrant for the city.
Yes, sir.
That their, their chairperson signed that one. We could move that process forward.
Yes, sir.
Um, this is something that every issuer across the state of Alabama and across the nation has, they have to sign this.
Yes, sir.
In order for an underwriter to, you know, give the city or entity advice.
Thank you.
So Bessemer is, um, every issuer I deal with, they have to go through this process.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Marshall. Councilors, you've heard, um, you've heard Mr. Lewis with his G-17 disclosure that gives him the permission to move forward with the bonding and the gas tax. Uh, what's your pleasure?
Madam Chair.
Your concerns? I just call you, Mr. Marshall.
Okay. My only question, and that was a legal question. Um, I know Mr. Lewis said that this was not a binding letter, but do we still need some kind of res- resolution?
Um, if I'm not mistaken, and, and do let me say this, and then, uh, hold on, he's turning me. They're working on our laptop, so I, I apologize. Let me say this, uh, councilors. Uh, I promised you all that we would have, uh, resolutions in hand before we got here. Let me, uh, apologize to you all for not having some of them until 1:10, maybe 1 o'clock this morning. Do know that I requested them on, um, March the 16th, and, uh, we're just receiving them this morning. Um, your question was, again, Mr. Marshall.
My question was, uh, from legal, do we not still need a resolution to go along with this?
If I'm not mistaken, um, Mr. Marshall, we do need a resolution to go along with this, yes, uh, we do. But we can ratify, we can come back and ratify. He just needs us to state that he needs to move forward so the city of Bessemer won't lose any more funding. Mr. Peyton, Mr. Peyton, are you on the line?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, how are you?
Doing well.
Good, good. Is there a problem getting us a resolution together? Um, be it the consensus of this body? So that it can be signed by the mayor and the president and the city clerk? To get this ball moving so that the city will not lose any more funding? If it's the pleasure of this body, is there a problem?
No, ma'am, in fact, we did one of these, um, I'll just pull one up, we did one for water revenue warrants back in 2016.
Yes, sir.
So if Mr. Lewis can send me a copy of the G-17 disclosure statement, I can, I can just change the wording in that resolution. That one was, this one will be for general fund and gas tax, is that correct, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, that is correct.
So I can use that same resolution and it allows, uh, the mayor to execute, uh, a G-17 disclosure engagement letter, uh, for, and this is Piper Sandler, is that correct?
Yes.
I think then it was Piper Jeffrey, now it's Piper Sandler.
That is correct.
Company, and that will be the only change that authorizes the mayor to execute that document to engage Mr. Lewis for these, uh, warrant purchases. And I can have that over to you in a few seconds.
I'll, I'll stay here after meeting, uh, to make sure that that is signed. Mr. Lewis, I need a motion.
Madam Chair, fine.
Yes, ma'am, discussion, yes, ma'am, discussion. Are there any concerns and/or questions? Ms. Alexander?
Yes, uh, Mr. Lewis, are the rates, are we gonna still get the same or have the rates increase, decrease? What's going on in the market?
The market is probably, the rates have kind of moved up on us. I haven't run the numbers recently as opposed to where we were a couple of weeks ago. But the market is not working in our favor right now. So, um, that's just the way it is sometimes. I mean, it'll come back, it'll go, it'll, it'll go up, it goes down. It's just how the market plays. Uh, we have some time here to try to get this transaction ready, and then we'll reassess once we get to that point, you know, there.
Okay, and you'll come back before the council and let us know the number, percentages, okay, thank you.
This, this letter, let me just say this, this letter allows me to interface with the mayor, allows me to inter- interface with, uh, Kila, attorney, so on and so forth, to, to be able to draw up the documents. But in terms of just communicating what's actually going on and relative to the market, it allows this, uh, this type of interaction there. I can get into the nuts and the bolts of this transaction, being able to have this, uh, you know, taken care of.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're still on track, uh, to get the most bang for our buck as far as going into refinancing these bonds. And just want to know what the market was looking like for us as a city. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am, Counselor Crusoe.
I, I know that I was, um, absent, um, when, um, Mr. Lewis came to do his presentation from previously. Um, but if someone could answer this, um, you know, I'm here, I heard him say concerning the, um, bond that, or gas tax that could, you know, used to, um, for paving up roads. Um, let's make sure that we, that, that I'm hearing that correctly. And just for the record, the, um, the bonds that we are refinancing now, um, this money can be utilized for, uh, repaving of roads here in the City of Bessemer. Is that correct, Mr. Lewis?
Uh, Ms. Crusoe, you were not here, you are correct, and I don't have a problem, just giving you a, a quick assessment of what we talked about the last time I was here. Um, there are two categories of bonds that we're looking at right now. One is a refinance of the general obligation warrants, okay? Right now, the general obligation warrants, that's a separate, that's a separate transaction, but they'll be done simultaneously, okay? Uh, we're just getting savings off of that transaction right now. The other, other side is the, the gasoline tax warrants that are outstanding for the city. The gasoline tax warrants are specifically for roads and reconstructing roads, so on and so forth. We're gonna refinance what's outstanding on those warrants right now, and we will add additional funds to that. Plus, the savings that we're getting on the general obligation side in terms of cash flow savings. We can transfer cash flow savings from the general obligation to, um, the ga- uh, for roads. So we can fund off of that as well. So we're refinancing on one side with the general obligation, but we're using some cash flow savings to be able to fund roads there. So you have two transactions, one on the general obligation, and then the other one will be on the, uh, the road for road funding there, uh, there. So that's what, that's the process that we're going through. And there will be conversations along the way, a ton of conversations as it relates to how we go about this, timing, so on and so forth. So, you know, as the council and the administration, the mayor, we just need you to stay tuned as we work through this. And, uh, I'll keep you abreast of, you know, how the process is working through.
Yes, sir, I mean, I just wanted to know that, you know, we're doing something to help generate funds as far as, um, you know, revitalizing, um, these, uh, roads here in the City of Bessemer. I know numerous times, um, when I've asked in the past, um, about paving a road, then, you know, we don't have the funds available or where the money is going to come from. So now, um, by going forth with this, you maybe, you know, perhaps we'll generate the funds to do the necessary repairs here in the City of Bessemer. Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Madam Chair.
She needs, I'm muted.
You're, you're muted, uh, Madam Chair, you're muted.
Can you hear me now, Counselor Marshall?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I apologize, go ahead, Counselor Marshall.
Uh, I'd like to move the resolution regarding this G-17 letter.
Second.
And it has been properly moved and second that we would, uh, move this G-17 letter along to give, um, Mr. Walter Lewis the authority, uh, to engage with the City of Bessemer. I need a row call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor Collier.
Aye.
Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Thickepin.
Aye.
Counselor Matthews.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you so much, um, councilors, thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you.
And we look forward to hearing from you in the near future.
I look forward to working with you and I look forward to recording back to you.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough, please, will you cut, uh, turn that one off or mute that one? Thank you so much. Item number 7C, Ms. Taylor.
7C.
Will be AMIC.
Ma'am?
It will be AMIC.
Oh, AMIC 7C, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
AMIC.
Counselor Alexander, are you ready to report to the council?
Yes, ma'am, am I ready?
Mr. Harris, are you on the line?
I am.
Proceed, Counselor Alexander.
So we had a, um, AMIC meeting last Tuesday, Tuesday before last, and we came up with some dates and, um, that things will transact and how it will happen. Attorney Harris, do you want to explain, uh, what's going on, explain the paperwork? I just emailed the paperwork, 'cause I don't know if you emailed the paperwork to Ms. Coleman to send to the rest of the councilors. But, um, I just emailed that paperwork as well. But can you explain, uh, the breakdown, uh, that we came up with in the committee?
Yes, Counselor, um, uh, you should have, two things were sent, uh, to you. Uh, a resolution authorizing the city to, uh, to issue a request or proposal, uh, picking up from the resolution 00121. That was a resolution adopted in January of this year, which authorized, the council authorized the issuance of requests for proposals. of this year, which authorized, the council authorized the issuance of requests for proposals. Of course, that, that resolution, that was a veto issued by the mayor with respect to same, however, as I analyzed it, the resolution, in my opinion, was not one of a permanent operation, therefore not affected by veto. The resolution, the resolution you have today picks up on resolution zero zero one two one, authorizing the city to go forward with the issuance of a request for proposal, and adds in addition there to a timeline for actually going forward with the, the RFP. And what the timeline does, it sets forth, first of all, the dates of publication of the notice, that would be eight, the beginning April the fourteenth through April the twenty first, setting forth that the notice of the RFP would run in the, on the city of Bessemer's website, the Western Star and the Birmingham News, and also sets forth things like the, the final, date for final questions with regards to the RFP, and all the way down to the dates of that the proposal would be open and read, would be June one, twenty twenty one, and the date that all, all proposals would be notified of the results Friday, June eighteen, twenty twenty one.
Councilors, you've heard, Councilor Alexander and Attorney Harris, these are just the dates, and this is the recommendation of the committee. I will place it on the planning session on next week to be discussed, and hopefully we will get a vote on the third Tuesday. Is that the consensus of this body?
Madam President?
Yes, who am I speaking?
Third Tuesday, Greg Harris, Madam President.
Okay, hold on, Councilor.
The third, the third Tuesday, the third Tuesday is the twenty, twenty, the twentieth. And the, would have to read, we would have to recalculate the, redo of the dates, because the dates before you, the publication would begin on April the fourteenth. So if you're going to move this to April, put this on, on, on that agenda, I would have to recalculate the dates of, of, of the advertisement through the dates of notifying results based on the actual start date from that point.
Well, we will have to recalculate seeing that we just received the resolution.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, Councilor Marshall.
I, I, I think it, it appears that we have a consensus that it'd be on the planning session, so that should give Attorney Harris time enough to recalculate dates to be discussed in the planning session.
No question.
Councilor, is that the consensus of this body, that we will, we will, we have the paperwork in our hands now? We will send it to give the Attorney Harris an opportunity to change the dates, and we will have it on planning session for discussion. And we will have it on the second council meeting for a vote, is that the consensus of this body?
Yeah, I'm saying, you, you say the second council meeting, what?
You got this council meeting, you got planning session and the second council meeting.
Okay, okay, you, okay, when you say the second council meeting, I thought you were talking about the, okay, all right. The next, the next council meeting.
The next council meeting, yes, sir, yes, sir. And we'll place it on planning session for next week. Item number eight will be tabled. I must again apologize. I requested these resolutions on March the sixteenth. We'll, if it's the, if it's the desires of this body, let us table item number eight until planning session, please, that'll give you an opportunity to read and get your questions ready for discussion on planning session on the thirteenth next week. Item number nine, Ms. Taylor.
Item nine is a resolution authorized of the mayor to execute agreement with Urban League for cares at funding.
Councilors, if you can remember, we have discussed this. We discussed it with Create Birmingham, and it was, at that time, it was Salvation Army. It was stated that I did not, I was not fair with the Salvation Army, so I indeed placed them back on the agenda so that I could be fair with the Salvation Army, but they did not show. We invited the Urban League and Mr. William Barnes, and today the resolution's on, so we can go ahead and get these fundings out to the community so that they can catch up on their rent and or house note and or utility bills. We're not trying to hole up any funding here for our citizens in the city of Bessemer. So there is a, a resolution, and if I'm not mistaken, you do have that resolution for the Urban League, Ms. Taylor, do you have that resolution?
Um, no, ma'am, I do not, but Urban League.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Coleman, please forward that resolution to Ms. Taylor, we'll have it read into the records, while Ms. Coleman is forwarding that resolution to Ms. Taylor, are there any questions and or concerns this morning?
I hear some.
Are you, go ahead.
Okay, Councilor Alexander.
I heard you say something about mortgages, because we do have tenants that not only rent, but they own homes or buying homes in the city of Bessemer that I have got approached by asking about, does the care they helped pay for mortgages and things like that, so I was just trying to get some type of clarity. I know it helps with rental assistance and utilities, but, you know, just to dig a little deeper, I was just wondering.
Madam Chair, Shan, could, could Ms. Taylor send me a copy of that resolution, also, I don't have a copy of that or the agreed, proposed agreement with Urban League, I don't have either one of those copies.
We'll have that, yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
The, the, the resolution that I got in the packet, it really is headed talking about micro enterprise assistance, which is completely different from, from the Urban League proposal, and my understanding is if the city of Bessemer receives HUD money, that city of Bessemer cannot just pass it on to another organization unless there's another agreement done, and so just having a resolution, but not a, a detailed proposal and agreement, you, you know, we, we, we're still, we're still needing to get an agreement from the Urban League that our economic development department needs to vet to make sure it meets all the guidelines to even pass money along to another, another organization. This resolution is, is incorrect. I mean, it's got the wrong amount of money, it's not the amount of money that was to be used with the Urban League if we entered into that agreement.
Thank you, Councilor Marshall, I, I will, let me say this, and let us, item number nine, let us put it on the planning session, but I did call and I did speak with Mr. Barnes to make sure, this was three weeks ago, to make sure that all paperwork was in the proper hands. And Mr. Barnes was only asked two questions, he was not asked to present any paperwork, and none was sent to him, to my knowledge, but to be on the up and up and to be transparent, and I truly believe in being transparent, to be transparent to this body and this city. I will take this, number nine, and place it on the planning session for next week. I would also ask for the record that whomever, Mr. Norris and or Abraham Ward, whomever is handling this resolution, the paperwork, will please get with Mr. Barnes so that we can have the correct paperwork in hand. I, in turn, I will call and or I will go to the Urban League this afternoon myself to make sure that we have everything in hand, we don't want to mislead anybody, and we don't want to misuse anybody. So number nine, councilors.
Madam President.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mayor Gully.
Along those lines, you mentioned my office, we had requests and saw some things from Mr. Barnes and stuff as well. Now, he did send some information to my office about two o'clock, it was up on yesterday. I've not had an opportunity to review it.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, when we're dealing and stuff with these type of funds, we're working and stuff on the federal government criteria.
Yes, sir.
And there has to be a contractual agreement that has to be reviewed by legal, and we have to enter into this this, 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 um, recipient agreement in order and stuff to do this, so, you know, we have no issue and stuff with who the council chooses and stuff to, to distribute the funds, but we have to have all the i's dotted and t's crossed in order to make sure this is in concert with what the requirements of the federal government so are. And, and, and we just received this information, as I stated, at two o'clock on yesterday.
Yes, sir, that's why I stated to be fair and to be transparent, and not only you, not only these councilors, but the citizens here in the city of Bessemer. We will place this on a planning session, we will give Mr. Barnes a call and ask Mr. Barnes to please contact your office to make sure that we have everything that we need, so we won't have to do this again next week, and we will get these fundings started for the city of Bessemer. Thank you so much, Mayor Gully, item number ten, please.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir.
I've been, I've been waiting to speak. Councilor Marshall, what, what information, what information have you, have you received, Councilor Marshall?
Well, what do you mean?
You said it was the wrong something.
Yeah, the, the resolution.
I heard you said you received something.
No, I said.
Where did you receive it at, through you?
No, the resolution.
I'm asking, you've received it by email or paper?
It was in the pack.
It's in your pack?
Yeah, it was in the pack.
Yeah, what, okay, that's, well, see, I don't have anything, I, I don't have anything.
Neither.
No, I don't have, that's why I was asking, I don't have anything to show for for, for, you know, I don't have anything, I just, I don't have, so, that's why I was asking.
I, I, I received, yeah.
Because I didn't have anything to, yeah, okay, well, yeah, Madam Chair, I think that's a wise move and, and, and.
Hello, go ahead, Councilor Matthews.
Oh, okay, well, what I'm saying is, I don't have, let's make sure that everything is placed at our tag, let's double check, so we won't continue to, you know, to make he-cups like we're, we're making in, in that way, because I, you know, I think everyone on this, around the table wants this to go forward so the recipients can receive the, the, the resources. But in order for that to happen, we all must have the same paperwork so we can make intelligent decisions, so that, that's all I'm saying, so, let's make, let's double check, because I, I don't have, I, I've, I've been looking through this envelope up and down, and I don't see it, so, let's make sure everyone.
In the, in the beginning, I think I apologize to this body.
Yes, ma'am.
For not having several resolutions, and I will continue to apologize to you because I, I did, I, I've, I've called and I've done what I've supposed to have done, but I will, I will make sure, councilors, that we won't have to continue to pass this on and or table this until the next week, we'll table number nine until planning session on the thirteenth, and I do promise you, we'll have everything that you need here in the city of Bessemer. Item number ten, Ms. Taylor.
Yes, ma'am. It's April sixth, twenty twenty one, weed nuisance report set hearing date.
Ms. Hall, how are you? Ms. Hall? Ms. Hall, are you on the line?
Good morning, everyone, yes, ma'am, I am.
I see your number up here, how are you doing?
I'm willing yourself, thank you.
Good, thank you, go ahead, Ms. Hall.
On the item that was placed on the agenda, I would like to request a hearing date be set for the third Tuesday in May, which is May the eighteenth at ten a.m., May eighteenth at ten a.m.
That's May the eighteenth at ten a.m., councilors, is there a problem, do you have a problem with that, are we going to, are we going to be in town or out of town, Councilor Matthews? Councilor Matthews? Will we be, May the eighteenth, will we be here? Or will we be?
Yeah, we, we will, we will have, we will be in town, yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, are there any questions and or concerns, councilors, about May the eighteenth, if not, I need a motion, a second and a roll call, please.
Madam Chair, I'm moved, I.
Need a second, please. Has been properly moved and seconded, that we will accept the weed nuisance report, and like I said, hearing date for May the eighteenth at ten a.m. here in the city of Bessemer. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Councilor Alexander.
Aye.
Councilor Collier. Councilor Collier. Councilor Crusoe.
Aye.
Councilor Marshall.
Aye.
Councilor Bigpen.
Aye.
Councilor Matthews.
Aye.
Councilor Donald.
Aye.
Councilor Collier. Six eyes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you so much, item number eleven, please.
City of Bessemer land bank.
Councilors, I am so grateful that we have a downtown redevelopment board that has been resurrected here in the city of Bessemer, and I think that we have some competent citizens who were placed on that board. And this morning, we are here from the chair of that committee, which is Mr. Dave Page, Mr. Page, I see you.
Morning.
Good morning, how are you?
I am very good, how is everyone?
Good, I'm good, I must say congratulations for you being chosen as chair among your peers.
Thank you.
You can go ahead, Mr. Page.
Okay, first, I'd like to tell everybody kind of, I am still battling kind of with the pollen, so if I call for a drink some more, that's, I'm having a fight with pollen, but good morning to, to everyone, to Mayor Gully, to Madam President, Donald, and to the entire city council body, I first wanted to say thank you to the council body, this is my first time being able to be on a call with everyone for my appointment, so thank you for entrusting in me. to first uh be a part of the redevelopment authority. Um, I know we have a lot of work to do and it's very important to the citizens of Bessemer. Um, I recall growing up um in Bessemer and downtown Bessemer was extremely vibrant. And uh for years, we've kind of seen kind of hints of that here there. And I know we have a really good task, a really big task ahead of us, but I do think that that is something that we can, we can really uh bring back and be very vibrant to economically, to the city and to the citizens. I'm, I'm, I serve on uh the Bessemer Redevelopment Corporation and we do a lot of work in the community and to hear the citizens to be excited about development and the conversations about uh development in the city is exciting. Uh, I think this is, in the last couple of weeks, we've seen a lot of news reports. And uh people are really excited and what that does is bring a lot of pride back to people that say, hey, we need to do better on our end because look what they're doing. So I'm merely here now uh in my capacity as chairman of the redevelopment authority to discuss the land bank. And for me, this is just um an initial proposal for land bank. Um, proposal, Madam Chair, do I have the uh availability to share a uh PowerPoint?
If you were here, uh Mr. Singleton, are you on the line?
Yeah, yes, ma'am, I am. He does have the ability.
He does have the ability to share that PowerPoint. Now, Mr. Page, uh, uh, how long is that PowerPoint?
Five slides.
Five slides. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Go ahead, Mr. Page, that's fine.
Did, did he say five seconds?
Five slides.
Five slides.
Oh. Yeah, I was gonna say, okay, I guess we need to move on. Go, okay, all right.
I do have Attorney Rod Evans on the line, so if you have any questions beyond, you know, my knowledge and will house, he was part of developing uh, working on a resolution that we will propose and I will send information as far as a proposal to the council uh after this call. But let me go ahead and share.
Mr. Page, let me ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
This uh resolution and the certificate of incorporation, does both of our attorneys have a copy of that?
Um, they should, but if they do not, um, I would definitely get all the information out to you guys after today.
Okay, if you can, um, get it to um Ms. Coleman, because we have to have um Attorney Peyton and Attorney Harris to look at this paperwork. We understand that Mr. Evans uh did help you along, but along with Counselor Alexander. But we have to have this paperwork in the hands of the city attorney and the county's uh coun- councilor's attorney. Go ahead, Mr. Page.
And I do know how important uh the land bank uh and the land bank discussion is to both Mayor Gully, as he did mention it on his uh State of the City address. And I will say, um, I do recall getting a phone call last year because I do operate as a consultant in business development and real estate development. And I got a call from Counsel Alexander and she said that she want us to put our, can we put our resources and our, and our, and our vision to together to work in District Two? And of course, I responded, growing up in District Two, being from District Two, living in District Two. And I remember her saying, hey, uh, we need land bank. And once we got with the redevelopment corporation, they got on the board and we start working in the community, we realized something. Hey, we can buy one piece of property here, but we can't get the other three or four parcels. You know, we can't go in and develop the neighborhood and help the citizens to, to be able to buy their own homes because we have onesies and twosies of property. And so I, Alex, she was, she was definitely in that and that was on the side of the district where she grew up in. And once I got over there, I saw the need that, yeah, we definitely need to start uh discussing and working in land bank. So I'll share this really quick uh PowerPoint um presentation, um, really quick here, if I can. So I, last night, I, I had been working on this for a while and I realized I did not want to come to you guys as a salesman. I am a citizen of Bessemer first. Um, I am somewhat of son of Bessemer, so um, I kind of wanted this down, so we'll go really quick in this and, you know, we all know that, you know, um, sorry about that. We all know that vacant and abandoned and tax delinquent properties uh throughout our city, they're not simply isolated phenomenons. They, you know, they begin to define our communities itself and it ends up defining really the minds of the citizens and how they look at their community. Um, and, and we all know that our city has struggled with the problems posed with unoccupied and dilapidated houses and vacant buildings and empty lots and, you know, um, those properties actually depress the tax revenues. They strain public service and demand constant and expensive attention from, from you guys, which is the local government. They end up being targets of arson, uh breeding grounds of crime and they present dangers and sometimes deadly playgrounds for um neighborhood children. I think we had an incident probably last year where, you know, a man was kind of attracted, he was brought into an abandoned house. Um, I think that was last year, but these vacant and abandoned properties diminish the resources available to combat blight, crime, disease, dis- investment associated with most of those forgotten lands. Um, this was very important when I put in the revitalization of our impoverished and neglected neighborhoods is necessary, not just for those who presently call them home, but for the long-term health and the greater good of the community. Okay, that was very important to me when I wrote it and I have to say it again, is that the revitalization of our impoverished and neglected neighborhoods is, is necessary, not just for those who presently call home, but the long-term health and the greater good of the community. Okay? And, and, and people that live there, I remember, I recall when my, you know, my mother and even me now, my grandmother, they would have to pay to keep their lots cleaned. And then they have to pay to keep a lot across the street clean and a lot on the other side of them clean that they could not purchase. Um, um, so I'm proposing your land bank and to go into some detail a little bit about a land bank. Basically, a land bank is our government entities that are basically focused on the conversion of vacant, abandoned and tax delinquent properties into productive use. They basically strategically, strategically um acquire these properties and convert those liabilities into assets. Um, they're, you know, land banks are tended to acquire tighter to these problem properties, eliminate the liabilities and sell the properties to new responsible owners in a transparent manner that results in outcomes consistent with community-based plans. Um, and it's always important to have a community-based pan, plan and, and somewhat of a comprehensive plan. The seller property can be arranged of stakeholders, including local nonprofit entities, municipal uh agencies and private developers. Um, the potential impacts, there are some transformative impacts as well, but land blanks allow communities to repurpose blight or abandoned properties to meet community economic development needs. Um, there's a county out in uh that I researched is out in uh Ohio uh that sells some of these properties at a low cost to neighborhood services, which is in greater Cleveland, and the community land trust that developed those permanently for affordable housing. Um, this collaboration helps the land bank meet the support of a housing uh disposition policies. And, and the transformative impact of that is that in cities where blight and vacancy and abundance are prevalent, policymakers typically look to private developers to breed new life into their community. I've walked downtown Bessemer. I think I saw actually Madam uh President Donald, I was walking through the district and probably District Seven with developers, was that probably last week, um, last Friday? Um, so I spent a lot of time walking through the community with developers and we all see the same thing, which are these properties that we can get, we can use the land bank as a tool to help us redevelop those properties. And basically how land bank is created, there's pretty simple steps. Um, if the number of tax delinquent properties in the municipality exceeds a thousand, um, then the governing body of the municipality may adopt a resolution declaring that it is wise, you know, basically to create a land bank. I think Bessemer may double that number. We may be, and I'll get, send over some detailed information about those properties. Um, you know, basically step two is we adopt, you know, the adoption of the authorizing resolution. Um, we develop board of directors and bylaws and you can, you add any other matters considered advisable by a local unit government and we incorporate that. Um, that's pretty much the simple, the simplicity of the step. And I know there's some legals in that. Um, and basically, you know, the, the, we can tweak the resolution based on, you know, the council and the mayor agreeing on some of those things. So nothing's necessarily in stone, but um, the board of directors govern the authority and a number of directs of the authority shall be five. Um, the board adopts bylaws within three months of its incorporation and something that's very important, I'll be pretty much done here, is for three of those directions, what we look at, it's putting people on the board that are very well-versed in what they do. So we were very strategic in saying that the consideration for those, the people that have served the board, they have to meet a certain expertise and experience in real estate, property management, finance, real estate law, transit planning. And we have these people that live in Bessemer, that are citizens of Bessemer. Um, which is very important. All this information is actually in our resolution. And, and again, basically how the land bank works is the city identifies vacant or tax delinquent properties in despair. The land bank works to consolidate clear title to the property and those vacant properties are returned to productive community ownership for use. Uh, that's pretty much uh the simple explanation of a land bank. And in closing, you know, I won't really go into, you know, the details of the closing, but really, the land bank is not a magical solution for all our problems. But it can be devised in a manner that allows us to deal effectively with properties in many of our communities uh that barriers that exist where we cannot develop. And I am seeing this now, you know, um, working with the redevelopment corporation and we are literally in the communities, listening to the people, seeing some of the houses that they're living in, seeing some of the homes that they're paying rent in, talking to developers and saying, you know, they're asking why you guys have a land bank. You know, there's a lot we can do if we had a land bank. Um, so that's pretty much in a nutshell. Try to kind of keep it under, I can be very worried sometimes.
Well, we know, but thank you, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. Page. Counselors, this is just the initial um, initial invitation from Mr. Page. We'll place this item on the planning session to be discussed after you've gone through the paperwork and you've gotten all your questions and or concerns um written down and ready for um Mr. Page. We'll place it back on the um agenda on next week to be discussed by the council and um Mr. Page. Is that all right with this body?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Item, thank you, Mr. Page, for coming, taking your time.
Thank you.
Uh, taking your time out to uh walk the communities. Thank you, Counselor Alexander. Thank you, Counsel, uh, uh, um, Mayor Gully, uh, for all of, all of what you do. This didn't just jump up yesterday. All this work just didn't jump up yesterday. So we as a body here in the city of Bessemer, we truly thank you all for all that you do for the city of Bessemer. Thank you for living in this great city of Bessemer. Have a good day, Mr. Page. Item number twelve, Ms. Taylor.
A resolution mandating an extension of face covering until June first, twenty twenty one.
Counselors, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, um, I was listening, um, listening to the governor and she has stated that she will lift the mandate. What is up to the individual municipalities to continue the mandate. Looking at the numbers here in the city of Bessemer, uh, even looking at it as late as yesterday, uh, as I got my first COVID, my arm hurts, as I got my first COVID shot, uh, look, looking at the numbers, um, this city has not been vast, uh, vacinated. Uh, we're not even halfway uh vacinated. So I would ask um this body to um extend the face wearing, the face covering until June first. Uh, the school systems has uh continued theirs until the twenty eighth of May, Birmingham twenty fourth. I would ask the city of Bessemer to continue its face mask until June first and we get more people vaccinated as we have more vaccination sites uh becoming available and more coming into the state of Alabama and to Jefferson County. Um, councilors, have you had the opportunity? Are there any questions and or concerns?
Madam Chair, yes.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, I have, uh, I have no problem with, uh, I have no problem with uh agreeing to uh extending the mask, mask wear.
Yes, sir.
Uh, but I would like to hear from, and not necessarily in this order, uh, law enforcement and the attorney who, who attorney or attorneys that need to draft up something for us. Um, I mean, if, at, at least, at least uh from an enforcement standpoint, uh, from the officers, because, uh, you know, and I know that, uh, there's several people at this particular time that that will walk around with no mask on or walk into a, a store or whatever with no mask. They, they just disregard it, you know, so. But I just wanted to hear from uh law enforcement, uh, if they're in it available uh and permitted and uh, and also legal to see, um, I guess, because I, I know Birmingham just uh, uh, the city of Birmingham just had a, I think it was one opposed. Uh, but the majority of the council in Birmingham extended theirs uh this morning, but I just wanted to hear from legal or and or law enforcement if they'll be available.
Madam President.
Yes, sir, uh, Mayor Gully.
Uh, I, I, I'll let legal and so uh speak in, 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 in just a minute. But I will, I will say, uh, uh, this, um, I guess my, my concern with, with, with the, one, what the governor has to say uh on uh, on Friday. Uh, and, and, and then if, if, if we were necessarily talking about municipal buildings, uh, uh, that would be a little bit different. Obviously, I'm going to continue to wear mine and, and so for as long as, as I feel comfortable. But uh what I, what I run, me, me, what I have some concerns about is being, right now, uh, when we go and some in the stores and in the restaurants, uh, as uh Counselor Matthews just mentioned as well, uh, uh, it's almost had become a personal choice when it comes uh to that already because a lot of restaurants and a lot of uh, uh businesses, individuals don't have on the mask and stuff right now. So I just worry about trying, uh, uh, an enforcement of that and how and stuff to, to mandate that from our standpoint, uh, when it comes to other folk in, 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 in the managing of their businesses. But uh, 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 for municipal buildings, uh, uh, yes, and for uh, uh, those people like myself, I'm, I'll probably continue to wear mine until everybody's uh vaccinated and throughout the end of the year. But I just wonder how and so we're going to go about it. Maybe we, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm open for discussion and stuff for that, or how we mandate that from after the governor releases hers, how we mandate businesses and so in, 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 in the, in the city. Uh, you, you know, mandate them having individuals use masks as they come in their business. Now, I'll turn this over to the chief when, when it comes to what he feels the numbers is and how uh, uh, he feels, uh, he can enforce this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Gully.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Chief, our council. Uh, I haven't had a chance to review the resolution at this time. Um, I'm just not knowing about it on yesterday. But we, we kind of having to prioritize right now the services of the police department because of all the things that are going on. Um, and we don't want to get bogged down on enforcement of mask orders. We do still to tell people right now, we see them in a business without a mask. We did, we, we tell them, you need to go and put a mask on. And most of them comply. But as far as writing any citations or arresting anyone, we have not done that. But we did, uh, back last year, we did end up having to well, almost arrest a couple of people, a couple of business owners. Uh, but we're still also waiting to see exactly what the governor's going to say. And uh, and we'll move from there.
Counselors, is it your consensus to, one, um, wait until after Governor Avi has made her official statement as to whether or not she's statement as to whether or not she's going to lift and then we'll bring it back and discuss? Or is there any discussion now on the face mask because she's going to lift on Friday? And we don't need a plan until the 13th. Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I, I think that's the prudent thing to do is wait and see what the governor has to say and then discuss it next week. I, I don't think it's something that we, we've got to make a move on right now.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
Have we checked with the county to see what they're going to do? Because they've been extremely cautious before the state had a mandate. I think Jefferson County had a mandate.
Yes, sir.
We're, we're solely in the Jefferson County. I just wondered, had we heard anything about what they were going to do? The Health Department, Jefferson County Health Department.
They're going to, as a matter of fact, they suggested that we continue to wear the mask, but we'll wait. We'll wait until after Friday to see what is going on and I will, I will contact Jefferson County Health Department. I was just listening to the governor and listening to the doctors from Jefferson County Health Department along with UAB. They're going to suggest even after the governor has given her a recommendation and has lifted the mandate. They're going to ask that you continue to wear the mask because they found that wearing the mask is truly the only way we can go ahead and stop this. Because if you, if any of you wrote the city on Sunday to see the parks, we said that the parks were closed, but you couldn't tell it. We even had an Easter egg hunt out in De Barton Laban Park on Sunday. So we understand, Chief Roper, where you stand with that. We understand, Mayor, that it may be a task to ask, and thank you for saying that you will ask that we continue to abide with the mask in the municipal buildings. But is it the consensus of this body to wait until Friday and discuss it on Tuesday?
That'd be fine.
Item.
I think the attorney Peyton was trying to.
I can't hear you, Attorney Peyton.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to point out, we, none of us know what the governor's going to do on Friday, but we need to pay particular attention to that order because you were able to meet via Zoom and YouTube pursuant to her order of last March that allowed us to do that. So let, let's look at that order because she may not, and I don't know, I'm just, I, I don't know what she's going to do, but we need to pay attention to see if she extends that order to allow governmental bodies to meet via Zoom. Because if she doesn't, then your planning session will have to be live next Tuesday. So just wanted you to be aware of that.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll be listening closely on Friday. We'll place it on the planning session for Tuesday, the 13th. Item number 13, Ms. Taylor.
Item 13, the resolution authorizing payment to EEFS Company PC for January 2021 invoices.
Counselors, you've had an opportunity to look at the invoices for EEFS. Are there any concerns and or questions about this invoice?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move the res- resolution to.
We properly moved and seconded. We'll accept the resolution, resolution for the 20, January 2020.
Discussion, Madam Chair.
I did, yes, yes, sir. Are there any? I thought I said, was there any questions and or concerns? Are there any questions and or concerns, Counselors?
Yeah, one, it's concerning the McCall Road project. I was wondering, is, what's the, is there any updates on that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Matthews, this is Ron Gilbert. We're in the, in the process of purchasing the needed right of way. And working with the, with the state and the appraisers to get that done. We have several tracks closed. And the rest appraisals have been finished. And the offer letters went out to the remaining tracks last week.
Okay, and, and I do have some emails that I'm, I'll be forwarding from Ms. Boyd concerning the, I guess, the right of way now, how it exists and the maintenance on the culverts and pipes there because it's been a lot of debris and water not flowing in the ditches. The water's been coming out on McCall Road, even just last week. But anyway, I forward those emails and pictures and video that Ms. Ms. Boyd has, has accompanied us with. So thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, sir. Any more concerns and or questions, Counselors? If not, it has been properly moved and seconded that we will accept invoices for January 2021 from EEFS. We will call Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander. Counselor Carter. Counselor Crusoe. Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Big Pan.
Aye.
Counselor Matthews. Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Set her eyes, no names, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 14, Ms. Taylor.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute grant agreement, between the Federal Aviation Administration Investment Airport Authority.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm going to have.
I can't hear you, Mayor Gully.
Hello?
I can hear you now.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to have Attorney Peyton to speak to that. It's concerning a, a grant that the airport has applied for. You may need council approval to accept the grant. Attorney Peyton, will you speak to that, please?
Yes, sir. The Airport Authority received a grant from the FAA in the amount of $23,000 under the CARES Act. And since the city of Bessemer is to sponsor the airport, there needs to be a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city attorney to execute that agreement on behalf of the Airport Authority.
And that's just to accept the $22,000?
For the $23,000 for the mayor and the city attorney to execute the grant agreement. Therefore, they are part authority to be able to receive those funds.
Counselors, you've heard Attorney Peyton. Are there any questions and or concerns?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
It's free, it's free money.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's free money.
Questions?
Yes, um, yes, ma'am. Cast, one moment. Thank you, Counselor Marshall. Yes, ma'am, Counselor Crusoe.
Yes, I agree that it's free money, not necessarily free when we have to abide by rules and regulations concerning it. Now, can you, somebody go a little more in depth as to particularly what these funds are being provided for?
Yes, ma'am. It is to be used to provide funding for costs related to operations, personnel, cleaning, sanitization, janitorial services, combating the spread of pathogens at the airport and debt service payments. And the grant, the grant was derived according to a legislative formula as to what the size of the airport is. And that was how the amount was determined. So this money goes to the Airport Authority to be used for those purposes.
Okay, another question. Was this grant COVID related as far as in with the sanitation and things of that sort? Or this is something totally different?
This is under the CARES Act grant. It was, it is COVID related for the Airport Authority.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Madam President.
Yes, ma'am, Counselor.
And Attorney Peyton, if I'm not mistaken, this is the second one that the federal government has issued to airports. Is that correct? This is the second one that Bessemer's gotten?
Ah, gosh, I can't remember.
I know we got the PPP and I think there was another 60,000 or something that came through earlier, last year. I mean, and this is, this is nationwide. The airports are getting this, these, these funds and they're dividing it up between the airport, like you said, because of the size. But yeah, this is just to help out with all the necessary cleaning and operations, whatever needs, needs to be done.
Right. One, one more question, if you don't, if you don't mind. I'm sorry, were you done, Counselor Big Pan?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
I'm sorry. As, as far as in accountability purposes, how do we know that these funds are being utilized for the things that we're voting for?
Well, the, the Airport Authority is might, will be making a representation to us that they will be using it for those purposes. We haven't had an issue with Airport Authority using grant funds in the past. I, I'm sure the FAA will be looking at the receipts and expenditures on this item to make sure that they are spending the money correctly.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am, Counselor Cruz, Alexander.
I was looking, I'm looking through the resolution and all this, how, how much is the award for the city to get?
It's $23,000.
Okay, $23,000. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
The document, the document laid out the accountability that they were expecting, what the money is intended to be used for. I mean, so, and the amount of money that they would be getting, because I was surprised that it was only 23,000. But, you know, still grateful to receive that.
Thank you, sir. Are there any more questions and or concerns? If not, I need a motion, a second, and a roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Didn't I do a motion? I thought I did a motion, but I will, I will.
Yes, do it again, Counselor Marshall.
I do move the item.
It has been properly motioned and seconded that we will accept the $23,000 from a grant that was provided for, for the Bessemer Airport Federal Aviation Administration from the CARES Act. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor Carter. Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Big Pan.
Aye.
Counselor Matthews.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Set her eyes, no names, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 15, Ms. Taylor.
Council members' comments, statements, or motions.
Before I go into my district, let me, let me say this. We had a meeting on Friday that I didn't find out about until four o'clock on Friday, a Zoom meeting with Create Birmingham. I'm very weary at this point in time because some of the things that we found out that's not listed in my, in the resolution. I'm going to place that, and is that one of the ones you're speaking of, Ms. Taylor?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay. I have it here in my hand and I have not signed it. Because I, after this, I had, it was on my desk to be signed. After the meeting on Friday, I do have a few questions. And I will ask those questions on next week and planning session so that I can get some clarity before I place my signature on the resolution. District one, please. District two.
I just want to say it has been a lot of homicides in the city of Bessemer to the family, all the family members of the homicide victims. I just want to send my sincere condolences to the first responders that has been tirelessly working these incidents. I just want to say thank you for coming in early, on shift, staying over. Thank you so much for what you do for the city of Bessemer. And again, my sincere condolences goes out to every victim, family member that has been involved in the homicide here in the city of Bessemer. Secondly, I have three addresses that the tree truck, I guess I had some complaints, 50536 Charleston Drive. A citizen called me and they had cut their trees, their own trees down and said that the tree truck drive right past it and says they, they can't pick it up because someone cut the tree down. And the citizen is explaining to them that she cut the tree down, her, her husband. And they moved it to the side of the road. I mean, she asked me, what do she pay taxes for if they're not going to pick up the stuff in the front of the house? Also, in the alley of 10th Avenue between 29th and 30th Street, I had a citizen call me last night and said that they came, the tree truck came and picked up certain things, some things, and they left certain things there. Also, this has been a blemish for two months, two whole months on 24th Street, two months. I seen when the tree went into the house as well as Counselor Donald, because she writes my district as well. I've seen the citizen that own the property out there cutting the trees down. And if anybody know this citizen, they know that he's not going to pay anybody to cut trees down. If there's some work to be done, he'll do it himself. I'm just asking, Mayor Gully, can you please get someone out there? It's been two months. It, it's almost been a fatality there on 24th Street, someone backing out. I've got reports that they can't see. I mean, it's just an eye sore in District Two. I mean, can we get someone to go out to 536 Charleston Drive, 10th Avenue between 29th and 30th Street? And especially on 24th Street? Can we please have someone to go pick the debris up?
I'm from, Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Alexander, we have someone go out there and assess that situation now.
Thank you.
District four.
I'll continue to send my request to, to the mayor's office. Thank you. Thank you. District five.
I'll continue to send to the mayor's office.
District six.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I was thinking, and, and you know, it's, I was thinking about something that was said early on in the meeting concerning the amount of bereavement and, you know, ficturaries that's, that's been going through. I'm not talking about just, you know, no drive bys. I'm just talking about people that just lost their lives. And, you know, it's, it's very, I guess, it's hard, because I've had three family members in the past two weeks, you know? And it's, it's somewhat amazing. You know, when things hit, hit close to home, it kind of brings you to a reality and it's just a mystery how, how life is and how short. One, you know, you know. it's just, uh, a mystery how, how life is and how short one, you know, you know, and the law is still in control, so I would, you know, just appeal to the council, continue to pray for, uh, the families that have lost loved ones, regardless of how they lost, how they've been lost, uh, let's continue to pray for them because that's, you can't always touch your family or be around them, but prayer changes things. I, I'm a, I'm a living witness to that, so, uh, let's continue to do that. So that's what I want to say about that. Now, city budget, um, you know, we can differ on policies and who has this authority and who has that authority, but one authority and obligation we have is the city budget, and, uh, it's coming close to the extension deadline, and I hope today that, uh, we need to come together. That's an obligation that we have to do and a duty that we should do, uh, and do it expeditiously at this time because, um, it's getting close to the extension date that we, uh, and we haven't had a meet. So I would hope that this, uh, Ms. Coleman can call and poll the council and see when the earliest, uh, meeting can be, uh, obtained by us so we can, uh, look at this budget and, uh, make changes or elaborate however we're gonna do it, but, uh, it's time now, time is drawing near, and can someone give me that, that date? Is it the nineteenth of this month or what day, what's that date?
Thank you, Counselor Matthews, that was, uh, one of my statements. Um, it is April the nineteenth.
Okay.
And, uh, I have, indeed, I have, um, asked the mayor for, um, dates that he is available, and he did send some dates, but those, uh, dates and times, ten-thirty, uh, several days a week, as you know, there are many of us work on the council. So I would ask the mayor to please send some dates that would, uh, give us six-thirty and after. That way, everything is, the daycares are closed and we're off from work. I'll send that, um, again in writing, uh, Mayor Gully, but thank you so much, Counsel. Are you finished or you have more?
No, no, I'm not finished. I'm gonna finish up on, I'm gonna finish up.
One moment, one moment, uh, Counsel Matthews, yes, sir, uh, Mayor Gully.
Madam President, um, uh, I, I'd just like to interject that, uh, you, you don't, you don't have to necessarily send me, um, uh, correspondence to that effect.
Yes, sir.
You choose and stuff the dates and how the council choose the dates, I'll make myself available, as I stated before, at any time that you also choose to have a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much, uh, Mayor Gully. We will, we will, uh, discuss those dates.
Okay.
We will get back with you. Yes, sir, Counsel Matthews.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor, thank you, uh, Madam President. Uh, fifty-six eighty-six, I sent a, uh, sent some correspondence about it, and it's, it's concerning restaurant equipment that one may own or acquire, and they bring it to their resident, and it's just, uh, it's, it, it seems like it's, it's starting to be a, a harbor. I got enough, uh, uh, people that hoard and stuff, uh, fifty, fifty-six eighty-six Flinthill Circle, and I, I, I do have pictures and, and from the neighbors that's looking at all this stuff, so, um, I don't know, uh, I'm hope, hopefully, uh, uh, let me ask this, does that fall under the environmental, uh, from an environmental standpoint, when people bring restaurant equipment out of a restaurant and, uh, expose it in the yard? I think this about the first, this the first time that I've ever witnessed as much restaurant, restaurant equipment as I seen, uh, this morning. And for the past month or so, it's been there. So, uh, I think that's, that's something that, that, that needs to be looked into is, uh, to let the adjoining neighbors know that the city can or cannot do anything about this. Attorney, are you? Madam, Madam President.
Yes, sir. Mayor Gully.
Uh, to, uh, Counsel Matthews, uh, yeah. Comments and stuff as well, you know, it's just not restaurant and some equipment. Uh, I, I think that, that, that all of us need to take an opportunity to sit down and look at the ordinance is, uh, uh, relevant to that, uh, see what the state law and so uh, uh, say we can and cannot do. Um, you, you, you know, there is a great deal in some houses, and we know that some, you know, private property prevents us from doing some things, but, um, uh, uh, I, I, I just like and stuff to see what the state says about that and what our own ordinance says regarding that because, uh, it's gonna be some ugly properties and stuff around where people, uh, uh, is putting a lot of things on their porch, and it's just, you, you know, I know it's private property and we're limited to what we can do on private property, but, uh, uh, there's gotta be some kind of remedy from somewhere that we can do to address some of those issues.
Has to.
So, so, you know, from, so from a le, from, from a legal standpoint, I, 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 you know, I, I'll ask the city attorney to look in the, uh, to look into what, what we can do to address some of those, uh, 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 some of those ugly sites and so, there's no other way to put it, you know? Good way to put it, but that's just what it is. And, uh, see, that's the laws change that allow us to do certain things because we are, our hands are tied when it comes to certain situations, even with the environmental officer, uh, uh, when it just comes to, 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 to junky, junky sites. And so, so, you know, that, 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 I, I, I completely concur, uh, with Mr. Matthews on that, but I, I would extend that pass, just restaurant equipment. Yeah, I, I appreciate that because I, I, I didn't wanna tell the resident, uh, or the homeowners next door, joining, okay, I'm gonna get this and send it, uh, to the environment officer, get him out here, 'cause I just said, let me look into it. So, uh, let's, I think we need to, uh, uh, hunker down all of us because I think all of us may have, uh, uh, some type of unsightly, uh, sore eyes in, uh, properties in our district, so, yeah, let's come together on that. And, uh, last but not least, uh, on January the twelfth, February the ninth, I had on the agenda, address two double oh seven Sixteenth Street, Noah, nineteen hundred eighteenth Way, Noah, and nineteen oh four or nineteen oh six eighteenth Way, Noah. Now, the, the ones on eighteenth Way was burned down, and I asked about the demolition and the, uh, the status on it. And at that meeting, uh, mayor stated that those properties, uh, are treated just like a standing structure, one. And two, uh, Mr. Harmon came, came back and, uh, Mr. Harmon, let me mute this, uh, Mr. Harmon came in and said that those properties would be, uh, cleared, uh, uh, March, and I came back and said, on April this, in April, when we come back to meet, those properties still gonna look like they look right now. And guess what? I'm glad you asked. They still look like they looked then. And I'm, I'm appealing to, uh, the, uh, building department, mayor's office. Need some help down in Pipe Shop. Nineteen hundred eighteenth Way, nineteen oh four or nineteen oh six eighteenth Way, and two double oh seven Sixteenth Street. Now, there, and Mr. Page said something concerning arson when these properties stay. Well, I had two s- side by side. They are good, they are good, uh, land bank properties, 'cause they are not in the flood zone. But anyway, right now, they're eyesores, and the people looking at them every day, riding up and down the street, and you, you know, and, and as Mr. Page said, you make the community even feel worthless in the citizens and the community when, when these properties stay as they are. So, no asbestos checks need to be done on the burned ones, and I think everything has been done on the one that's still standing. I don't want it to be a, a arson as well because there's two people living on each side of that one, and they're close enough to do some damage, so, uh, there needs to be some, some, some hurry up, let's do it type of attitude to these properties that I'm speaking about, that I've been speaking about since August of twenty twenty. Okay?
Uh, Madam President and Councilman Matthews, this is terrain. Uh, Mayor Gully had to step out for another meeting.
Yes.
Councilman Matthews, those three properties that you submitted to us are out for bid.
Okay. Well, I'm just going back, and as I stated, they said that they will be done the end of March, and I thank you for that bit of information, but when I'm being told something, uh, you know, that's all I could go on. So you say they're out for bid, so that's my last, so if I come back and say anything else, I'm gonna be saying, you said that they were out for bid. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Narv.
Thank you so much, uh, Counselor Matthews. Of course, everyone who rides District Three knows what it looks, what it looks like. Thank you, uh, Counselor Crusoe, for, uh, doing my daily due diligence when I was out of town. Thank you so much. But, uh, I need to say this, and, and I've been saying it off and on for quite some time now. Dartmouth Avenue and Twenty-Second Street, we need a traffic light there. There was a near fatality of one of our motorcade officers about a week and a half ago. If you're right there by James Ward House, you would have to pull completely to the middle of the street in order to see. He did what he, he pulled out from the traffic, I mean, from the, the stop sign to the middle of the street, and I just put my head down because I did not want to see him get hit. He saw the car coming and he pulled up on the, the sidewalk to keep from being struck by that car. I know many of you state that it doesn't need a traffic light there, I beg to differ. That dip there has nothing to do with it. The dip on Thirtieth Street is much deeper than that one there on Twenty-Second Street. Now, if we do not, if we do not heed the call, and the call is coming clearly because it almost hit home with our, with our officer. He could not see, he could not see that car coming. And I'll tell you, someone else could not see on yesterday. One of our council members called me to let me know. Counsel Donald, it's a mess here. And I let him knew. I have been reporting this, I know now for four years. I'll say again, as passionate as I am about the south side of Bessemer, Dartmouth Avenue and Twenty-Second Street need a traffic light. I will place that on the agenda again so that we will have some discussion from the mayor, with city engineer, and Chief Roper. A meeting place, Bessemer has given us a meeting place here on Ninth Avenue in front of the dispatch office so that when we are purchasing items from M, uh, from on the internet, they've given us a place to meet there. There's no need to meet in Carver Park, in Barton Laban Park, there's no need to meet on a, um, Taco Bell parking lot. We have a place, citizens, we have a place for you to meet and purchase and or sell whatever you have agreed to right there on Ninth Avenue, no. That shooting on Sunday in Carver Park shouldn't have ever been had you abided by what Bessemer already has in place. You cannot, you cannot state that the council is at, is at fault, nor can you state that the mayor and the police chief is at fault. Bessemer has a place there for you to meet and for you to buy and sell whatever it is, you have to sell. Uh, Mayor Gully, Chief Roper, I would, um, I am going to place on the agenda next week for a public safety report, uh, for the city of Bessemer. We've already discussed the budget, we'll get some dates together. Uh, Attorney Payton received a call from Pastor Keyid. She has placed an order for the properties there on Dartmouth Avenue. Is there a status? Does the council need to go ahead and do what it needs to do? Declare the property surplus? And discuss it and be ready to sell it? What's the status on that property there?
Um, and this is on Dartmouth Avenue?
Dartmouth Avenue is like twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, Dartmouth Avenue or twenty-four, I, I can't remember right now, but it's that house there, the tree fell through the rear of the home, and it's been sitting there, I know, two, three years.
Does the city own the property?
Yes, sir, the city owns the property. I have it on the list that I received from Jefferson County. Yes, sir, the city owns the property. She has sent, uh, she sent a letter to you, me, and the, uh, myself and the mayor. I don't know whether the other counselors or not has the letter, but, uh, she in turn called to see what the status of that property was. And her offer is, her offer is on the letter.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I don't remember that one as well right now, so let me look at that and I will report back to you, okay?
Thank you, sir. Counsel, it is, it has been wonderful. I pray that you all had a wonderful weekend, you had a rest for AEA. I do tell you, I had a great time with, uh, my grandbabies. Donald, I know you look forward to it. Counselors, you have a great day. I'll be in touch with you by, by tomorrow and or Thursday. Thank you all for all that you do for the city of Bessemer. Have a good week, ma'am. Bye-bye.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I need to adjourn.
I'm sorry. I need to, I need to adjourn, a second and a roll call, Ms. Taylor.
As for District Seven, I, I will forward my issues on.
District Seven.
Sorry.
I do apologize.
I mean, just about everything that I needed to, my district, uh, you know, it's already been touched on, so we're, we're good.
Thank you, thank you. I do apologize. Yes, sir, um, I did call, uh, District One.
Yes, yes, ma'am, my, my mic was muted by time.
Okay, alright.
So I just, uh, just a couple things, uh, the, uh, concerning the parks, uh, could you put that on planning session so we can, uh, come up with something to try to reopen at least the outside, outside parks and, uh, a plan to come up with opening everything that we, uh, closed up during the COVID?
Um, um, Counsel Carter, uh, I have had the attorney to poll, and, um, I did, we did call you. Um, at this point in time, um, yes, I will place it on, um, planning session to be discussed, but at this point in time, from what I'm getting from the majority of the council, is to allow the city to at least have, have vaccinations in place before we open. I know what we saw Sunday, I, I do know what we saw Sunday, and, uh, yes, sir, I will place it on the agenda.
Okay. And, uh, continue prayer for everybody, uh, in the city of Bessemer, lost loved ones, and continue prayer for the white, feminine, I for everything else to the rain's office.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Counsel Carter. Uh, motion, second, and a roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counsel Alexander. And she's already gone. Counsel Carter.
Aye.
Counsel Crusoe. She's already gone. Counsel Marshall. Already gone. Counsel Big Pan.
Aye.
Counsel Matthews.
Aye.
Counsel Donald.
Aye, thank you all. I look forward to speaking with you this week. Bye-bye.